Which is on the wall. If we could stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the name of the Lord, with all his justice for all.
We will start with roll call for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Mr. Clark.
Mr. Borgeson, Mr. Boyle, Mr. Duda, Mr. Morgan, Commissioner Rogers here, Commissioner Tusha.
Here.
And, Mr. Chairman.
Here. We have two items. A is the approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, October 23rd, 2012. And B is a call for a meeting set Tuesday, November 13th, 2012, as date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rolls of increased value on property.
Motion for V and B.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I see no lights on. Call for the vote. Next, we have a period of citizen comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on items as it affects, as they relate to the Douglas County Board of Equalization, items that are not on the agenda. Seeing no one wishes to speak, we will go to the resolutions. There are three. D is approving government-owned properties. E is approving government-owned properties. And F is approving application for tax exemption on motor vehicles recommended for approval by the county treasurer.
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I see no lights. Call for the vote. Next, we have a homestead exemption. Item G, Raymond and Marilyn Freido, I hope I said that correctly, 3531 North 205th Street, Alcorn, Nebraska. Mr. Goodwilly.
Mike Goodwilly, Douglas County Assessors Office. This is a simple late file. We received the applications for 2012 and 2011 at the same time. The 2012 was timely. The 2011 is not. We've already granted the 2012.
And what is your recommendation?
Well, do you want to follow the strict letter of the law or do you want to do what you usually do?
You can't include me in on that one.
Is there a second?
Yes. Well, usually, despite the mandatory language of the statute, you grant it.
Well, it's also a constitutional right.
Well, as the legislature shall provide, but that's, you know, we've had that running argument for a while.
Let me ask you a question, Mr. Goodwilly. What if it said to file it on pink paper and they did it on red? Would you say it was a no deal? The answer is yes. So, let's vote to approve this. It's a just, it's a particular, you know, matter. The bigger issue is that people qualify for homestead exemption and they ought to be granted.
Commissioner?
Second.
Okay. Commissioner Rogers.
Yeah, I got a question too. I mean, it's, from the letter, this guy says, "I'm hoping to get money back to help cover expenses for my parents." And I mean, it's not, I understand it, but this is like a, he, it's not on this portion here. It doesn't seem typical in the fact that this is not like the common mistake. I mean, he found out.
Commissioner, most, most of the late filers we get are, are people who have been in the system for, for a while, who've had homestead for a while. And they miss a year and then, for whatever reason, usually, the triggering event is when they get their tax statement in December because suddenly there's taxes on it when none were there before. And, and so then they, they file and it's, and it's late. This is the first application that we've gotten from these folks ever.
Call the question.
That answered your question? Okay. We have a motion and a second. No one else is supposed to speak. Call for the vote. Now, we have a penalty appeal. Appeal of penalty on personal property for April Dee Coover, attorney-at-law, 11620 Arbor Street, Suite 200, Omaha, Nebraska. Mr. Goodwilly.
Ms. Coover has a business, didn't file her personal property returns for 2010, 2011, and 2012 until just recently here in October 2012. Her personal property penalty, which is 25% of the tax, is due for 2010, is $6.44, and her penalty for 2011 is a snappy $4. We don't, we don't know what it's going to be in 2012 because the rate isn't out there officially for billing. But nonetheless, it's a business who just didn't file their personal property return.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Commissioner Boyle.
Mr. Goodwilly, I want to ask, we're getting these weekly and everyone seems to be referring to letters that they're getting from your office. What's this all about? Did you send these letters out before or is this the first?
Sure. What we do when we have a business in the system that we've learned of that hasn't filed a return, we will send them out a penalty assessment saying, "We've not gotten your return. Here's what we estimate your value to be."
How do you learn about the business?
With this one, we, we actually send people out in the field, you know, to go to office buildings and talk to landlords and see if there's businesses in places where they've worked before. We don't have unlimited staff to do that, but yeah, I mean, we don't get anything from the business fairy to say, "In the past year, all these new businesses opened." So, we got to go find them.
Well, speaking of business fairies, is this, this is a $4 bill. You're saying you send people out to collect $4?
No, Commissioner. We, we send a penalty assessment out. Usually, that gets somebody's attention and they actually file a return. And then we calculate the penalty based on the, the value they put on the return and what the taxes are going to be. So, no, we don't set out to send a $4 bill. We set out to get a return from the business.
When you send people out in the field to look for businesses?
Sure.
Okay. Well, I, I think the thing is that, you know, people are, let me ask you a question. Don't people have a responsibility to pay taxes whether they get a notice or not?
Well, you know, we're on the same page with that. I have no idea why, why this person filed her appeal on the idea that somehow we had some affirmative obligation to tell her she needed to file her property tax return.
Do you send letters out saying you owe on personal property to anybody? I mean, before, you know, let's say that there's, let's say Conagra. Do you send Conagra a letter every year saying, "This is a reminder to pay your personal?"
No.
Okay. You don't send anybody those letters?
No.
The only letters you send is, is, "Hey, you didn't pay."
You didn't file.
That's the deal.
You bet.
You didn't file, so that's the deal. Okay. Well, I make a motion to deny this request.
I will second the denial.
We have a motion and a second. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Seeing none, call for the vote.
He confused me by voting the other way.
Vote yes if you want to deny. No if you want to give away.
I know, but you confused me by voting the other way.
Commissioner Morgan.
Look, he confused me by voting the other way for to deny this one instead of, so I had to think about whether I was voting.
On that merger question, on register of deeds and the assessor? Vote no if you're.
Now, we need a motion to adjourn.
No, I'm not.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Pam, why don't you just let me mark your ballot?
I'll just bring it to your house.
Now, we will convene as the Douglas County Board of Commissioners.
Motion passes.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha, and Mr. Chairman.
Here. We have the minutes and claims. Item A is approval of minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, October 23rd, 2012. And B is approval of claims submitted for payments processed through Tuesday, November 6th, 2012. Complete listing is on file in the office of Douglas County Clerk Comptroller. The website is on the screen.
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Call for the vote. Next, we have the consent agenda. Item D has a change. There's on item number seven, which is located on page two, they're deleting the word gross from in front of negligent acts. Okay?
And both sides are agreeable to that?
Both sides are agreeable to that. Then, I believe that's the only thing. There are total of seven items, A through G. Is there anything anyone wants to have separated out for discussion? Commissioner Boyle.
Yes, I'd only like to ask about the, item B, the Commission of Industrial Relations, 42,000. Could somebody explain what that is?
Patrick, do you have that or?
I can explain it.
Diane?
Okay. This is the lawsuit that was filed in the CIR alleging an unfair labor practice against Douglas County in the county clerk's office.
That's right.
We spoke about it in executive session.
Yes, I remember that now. I'm sorry. I didn't see it alluded to in the details. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have a motion and a second?
Motion.
We have a motion and a second. Call for the vote. We do not have any recognitions or proclamations today. Citizen comments. This is an opportunity for members of the audience to be heard at this time for a maximum of three minutes on any topic not on the agenda as it relates to the governance of Douglas County. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Seeing none, we'll go to presentations.
I apologize, but the presentation on the Douglas County seal will be laid over for two weeks. Thank you.
Okay. There are no public hearings. Next, we have committees. Finance Committee, Commissioner Duda and Commissioner Morgan. And Administrative Services, Commissioner Tusha.
Nothing today, thank you.
Child and Youth Services, Commissioner Rogers.
Nothing today.
Okay. You do have a note that there will not be a Child and Youth Service Standing Committee meeting in November. The next Child and Youth Service Standing Committee meeting will be held on Tuesday, November 4th, 2012.
December 4th.
What did I say?
November.
Oh, December 12th, excuse me. Okay. Community Services, Commissioner Duda.
I'd love to report today.
Okay. Criminal Justice, Commissioner Boyle.
I'd like to ask Mr. Conry, Mark Conry, to come to the podium. Is he here? Yeah, there he is. Back there in that dark area. Kind of the equivalent of a smoke-filled room back there, I think. While Mark's coming down, I just want to say a couple of words about the work he did. It was just terrific. He's put together some wonderful plans that I hope will be approved today. Mark?
Thank you, sir. Mark Conry, Chief of Communications, Douglas County. These two items are going to be related. I can talk about them individually or we could take them together depending on how you want to, you want to handle it.
I think together, Mr. Chair.
We can take these together. Item one is approving a resolution to purchase 13 911 phone positions for the 911 backup center on sea level. And item two is a resolution approving the interlocal agreement for the sharing of the 911 backup center on sea level between Potawatomi County, Sarpy County, and Douglas County.
We've been, we've been working together between the three counties to try to come up with a way that we can share resources in lower cost. And so, one of the, one of the ideas is, is sharing in the backup center and equipping the backup center. And so, what you're going to have in front of you is an interlocal agreement that details the method that we're, we're going to do it and the, the upfront costs to Douglas County, which is going to be minimal, to say the least. And then, the sharing agreement as it goes on. One of the items that we have to, to buy, we have two 911 controlling CPEs. They're the, they're the 911 controllers. We'll have one in Potawatomi County and we'll have one in Douglas County. And what we'll do is we'll make sure that they're billed out to the area that they can back one another up. Okay? And, and the reason that's important then is if our 911 system would go down on our side, Potawatomi County could feed us the 911 calls as, as our first level of redundancy. If we would lose anything out at the building, if we'd lose anything out at the building, we could move to the backup center. The same thing for Potawatomi County. We'll make sure that we could feed them their 911 calls in the event of something catastrophic where they could move to the backup center. By doing that, we don't have to buy another 911 controller and put it in the basement of the civic center. We'll be able to feed them from, from two different locations and we'll save money. But what we have in the basement is a, is an older controller and so, we're going to do away with it and we just have to buy some additional positions to support the needs. And that's why we, we need to buy the 13 positions. Now, Sarpy County's contribution to this will be $90,000 and Potawatomi County will be paying $24,000, something along, something along those lines. And so, we'll be buying those and we'll take on the, the responsibility to maintain them, but the upfront costs will be provided by the two counties. And so, this, these two agreements, one, which will allow us to enter into a contract with CenturyLink to buy the 13 positions, and the other is to, to build out the equipment in the, in the backup center, which is in the basement of this building, and then be able to use it in the matter of an emergency. We can use it for training. We can use it to support the OC. There's, there's a myriad of, of uses that we can, we can do. So, I think that based on the, the terms of the agreement and the length of the agreement, it puts us in a, in a very, very good place as far as it's really held our costs down and it's the ongoing costs we'll be able to share between the counties. So, in case you have any questions, I'll be, will be very happy to answer.
Commissioner Tusha.
Mark, you were talking about you're going to have one here in Douglas County and one over in, in Potawatomi County. And you're going to share the information with the two. What happened to Sarpy County? Do they already have one?
Sarpy County is going to, Sarpy County can be a redundant, a remote site off of that or they can keep their own. But what's going to happen is if Sarpy's would fail, it would come through either one of the two and we would feed Sarpy County or Sarpy County would be able to go down there and the lines would be fed.
Okay. So, it's still, even though you're getting just the two, it's still involved all three of them?
Right. There's a, there's another piece of this puzzle that's taking place this week and that is, is that Washington County is going to be a remote off of our, our site. So, we will, they'll get rid of their 911 controller and they will be remotes off of this. That's going to be implemented this week. That was part of another, that was part of another project. And so, that what we're going to have here when this is all over is the region will be pretty much tied together. And, and we will have the redundancy and the resiliency that we need and, you know, which is kind of one of the prerequisites of cybersecurity and all the things that are going to enter into it. So, we feel that all of this put together is, is a, is a, is a very big plus for the region.
Now, will you get funding from Washington County on this?
Washington County will share, Washington County's buying their own and they'll share in the maintenance of, of, you know, they don't have to go out and buy a $100,000 piece of equipment, but they will share in the maintenance of our, of our Viper.
And, and this equipment, this should last for a while, shouldn't it?
Yes. I mean, it's, the new IP world, IT world, you know, you're going to, you'll get blade, you know, you don't have to do anymore, you know. I would be very surprised if we ever have to do a truck lift. We might have to change out cards or blades or, you know, upgrade software, but I can't really see, just like in a network, you know, unless, unless something totally new comes down the pipe. But I think most, most people, as most of the vendors, at least I deal with, are trying to make everything they do backwards compatible so that you have a migration path to, to be able to, to do that without having to do a forklift.
And of course, the minute you buy the software, it's obsolete.
Yes, ma'am.
Did they give you any idea of?
Yes, ma'am. That's in the, that's in the, the part of the, the contract of buying the phones and so that's part of the agreement that we're going to share, we're going to share in those costs too. So, all that's been planned and, and identified the best way we can and it's in the, it's in the interlocal.
Awesome. Well, thank you.
Commissioner Boyle.
I want to take just a moment to thank Mark for his leadership. We all like the word regional a lot and you've really done a terrific job in putting this together and we appreciate your, your skills and you're really a valuable part of the Douglas County family and we appreciate the work you do.
Thank you.
I second that. Thank you, Mark.
We have a motion and a second. Before we vote, I bet when you heard in New York City they were doing 10,000 calls every hour, that you were just solvating. Solvating.
That's, that's a little outside our region, but we'll look at it.
Call for the vote.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
Okay. Next, we have Health and Human Services, Commissioner Borgeson. Nothing? Okay. Human Resources, weekly personnel report from civil services as, as presented. And legislative items, we have a number of Douglas County legislative initiatives that we will be discussing at our tri-county retreat. And there is a change on item three where two words were accidentally switched. Item three should say, "Allow specific elected row offices to be appointed. Permit the counties with the city of the metropolitan class to appoint county officers who are currently elected." And so, we will need to make that change. Is there anything here that anyone wishes to discuss? Commissioner Boyle.
I'm, I'm concerned about number four. I, I really don't think we even need to put this on our agenda. I think we can work without having to be so public. It sounds, you know, if Mr. Farrick was here in the audience, the first thing he'd notice, "Oh, wait, he's here." No, if he was here, is that we have down here oppose any attempts to city-county, for city-county merger. Well, you know, I don't know that we oppose any attempts for any of these things. I just think it's, you know, I suppose most of us do, but some do, some don't. But I, I think it's just really unnecessary to be quite that explicit. The other thing, it'd be really nice if we could turn number five into something positive like instead of saying oppose, say that we support the present statutory description of the, you know, the Visitor Improvement Fund bill. Something to be a little more positive about. And finally, I want to mention that I think the state is going to be introducing, I'd like to see us support, as I mentioned at the meeting, and the, a, an ordinance to set fees that I think could be a real assistance for all of our elected officials. So, I'd like to see us include that, supporting ordinance authority to set fees.
Any other comments?
Can I, can I make a motion to include that? Is there anybody who's opposed to that? I'd like to make a motion that we add, support obtaining ordinance authority to set fees.
We have a motion and a second. I see no other discussion. Call for the vote.
Mr. Chairman, is this on just the amendment?
The amendment?
This is under legislative items, the legislative issues.
Is it just for that one?
Oh, to add that too, yes.
So, this is not on the measure itself?
Okay.
Oh, it's a amendment in the measure?
I'm confused as to what you're asking.
Is it a friendly amendment or do we have to vote on? We haven't voted on the whole thing yet.
We haven't voted on the whole thing. I think it would be appropriate to vote on this to, to include it.
Do you want to add it as a friendly amendment?
Yes, I would.
As a friendly amendment, okay.
So, just so you're clear, there's no motion on?
There's no motion on this, yes.
Okay. Just on the amendment?
Okay.
Change your motion to?
I thought I did, to a friendly amendment.
No, that would be a motion to approve the legislative package.
Oh, to approve the whole thing? Fine, but I would like to remove that, oppose that city-county merger and, you know, I don't know what anybody thinks about that, but what's the thinking on that? I mean, I'd like to remove number four, oppose any attempts for city-county merger. I think that's just asking for a, a big fight. I just think it's.
Commissioner Rogers?
What's the point of it? I mean, is that Senator Ashford's bill or what is it?
I actually don't think it's a big fight because if they wanted to do it, they'd have been, they've done it years ago. I mean, they have, they have the power. They, to me, they basically jumped out the ring of it when they decided to say one government approved this, the other government approved that. If the state wanted to do it, they could do it in a minute.
So, I mean, who's "they"?
The state.
Okay. Well, I mean, I don't understand. What's, what's, what's the bill that is going to cause for the, call for the city and the county to become one? Is that what this is?
If I may, I don't think it's going to be a big issue either if we support it or if we don't support it because we're going to do what we're going to do.
Right.
Personally, I think you're right. It doesn't need to be included in the legislative package, but at the same time, it doesn't hurt to include it in the legislative package. And it's one of those 50-50 issues.
Wouldn't it be something that you could?
Talk about a bit at the breakfast too, to get some of their input rather than just come out opposing it? I mean, I'd like to see us at least have some discussion. We talked about that a year ago.
And these are the items we will be discussing at the legislative breakfast on the.
Well, can I make a suggestion because I would, I mean, I, I don't have anything, but the thing I would think that needs to be there is any, oppose any incomplete attempts because to me, incomplete means you don't, and I'm, and I'm going to just say this, there are, there are two, there are two mergers that are held up as the creme de la creme. Marion County in Indiana and Jefferson County in Louisville. Marion County is incomplete and it's been complete since Dick Luger was the mayor of Indianapolis. The only reason they did it was to bring more people in to vote for the mayor's race. They have not touched it since, really. Louisville was done to make a city of 200-plus thousand turn into an area of 700,000 and they moved them up economically. If we do it, you have 497,000, you move up to 510, which doesn't move the needle. Plus, in Jefferson, Jefferson County has not completely merged public safety. They are still struggling to do that. So, to, I'm fine with leaving it in there, but I would say oppose any partial or incomplete because what people want to do is just look at Omaha and Douglas County. It would be a debacle to do Omaha and Douglas County and have other places out there on their own. If you're going to do it, you do it. You can't do it half. So, I'll, you know, I'll agree to either take it off or amend it to be no partials, which basically means you're not going to get there, which is my point originally because if the state wanted to do it, they'd do it. And there's no way some of those senators in Bennington Valley are going to do that. And so, I'm, I'm fine with making a change if it's not partial.
Commissioner Boyle. Chris, were you done?
Yes.
Okay.
When I see this on the agenda, it's, there's a, I have to squint because I see in parentheses Senator Ashford. I mean, it's, to me, this is a broadside at Senator Ashford because he's the one that talks about these things. And I, I don't, I, I don't understand that. I mean, what, what are we opposing? Any attempts? I mean, what are, what are the attempts that are out there that I'm not aware of? And I'd like to ask you, you know, what do you think Senator Lathrop or Senator John Nelson or Senator Scott Lautenbaum will think? If they come to this breakfast and they see a thing opposing any attempts for city-county merger, you know, there you go again, Douglas County. I mean, what's that all about? I mean, it, it looks like we're, well, let me put it this way. Two things I hear when I'm out among my constituents and even beyond that, "When are you going to merge?" You know, people think merging is just, you know, sliced bread. And so, we come out saying we're opposing any attempts for city-county merger. I just think that's, what is it? Let's oppose, when we wait until a bill comes out and say we oppose LB blah blah blah, whatever it is. Hey, let's get specific because this is, I just think it's unnecessary, you know. I'd like to see us take it off and if something comes up where there's a bill to do something that's, as Senator, Senator, Jim, really, I think I'm elevating you to Senator Rogers, Commissioner Rogers. Commissioner Rogers. If it's, excuse me, incomplete, as he suggested, whatever it is, then we vote on it and oppose it. That's my thought.
I agree.
Commissioner Borgson?
Well, then we might as well take off the majority of what we have listed here, because there is no bill currently on the floor that we know of that's going to, that we can take a position on. This sheet here was basically legislative initiatives that we all talked about in terms of what are we going to talk with the other counties about in supporting or opposing if something were to come up. So maybe the best thing would be not to take any action today, wait till after the tri-county retreat, wait till we have a bigger, better legislative agenda in front of us to vote on something. But these, in my opinion, that are on here are basically conceptual things that we've talked about, that we have opposed, not only in the past, but even during this year, during our discussions. So, again, the only one that is relevant to keeping it on, that we know that something's out there, is the Public Advocacy Commission. So I think we just wait. I think this is a, putting in front of us, we're going to have a meeting with Lincoln or Lancaster and SARP, and then bring it back.
Okay, Commissioner Morgan.
We know that the inheritance tax is probably out there, too.
Well, we know city-county merger is, too. I mean, that's my point. Yes, we do. You just said it, Ashford.
Well, then why don't we, excuse me, I'll wait till...
Well, that's my point.
Well, I'm waiting for Mr. Craft to recognize us, I guess.
Commissioner Morgan.
I'm fine. I mean, I think we ought to leave it as it is.
Just lay it over, is that what you're saying? Till after our meeting?
Yeah, I think that would be, and maybe have some discussion with the state senators. I think that would be more respectful, to at least talk about it, what might be out there. But I think the inheritance, we know where we are, and we know that's probably coming, and we know where we stand on that together, pretty much together. Right, Claire?
Commissioner Boyle.
Well, I disagree with Commissioner Borgson. We do know at least three of these bills. First of all, one of them, number two, we introduced. So we do know that, and I assume we'll take a position on our own bill, although I disagree with it. Number two, the legislative on the inheritance tax, it's real obvious that Governor Hyman is going to go in and try to take that away from us, so that's obvious, leave that where it is. Number three, that's an initiative of Commissioner Tusha, so I assume we should continue to support that. So then you get number four, and if it is Senator Ashford, I mean, I mean, what is he introducing to merge the whole? I don't even know what he is. I don't know what the legislation is. And, you know, the number five, I support that, that there should be no changes to the Visitor Improvement Fund, but I just don't think we should, it's embarrassing to have this on our agenda. And on the other hand, I think that we do need to have something to present to the state senators at the breakfast, and I'd like to see us take something to Lincoln, because in the past, they have such a thorough presentation, and we're standing there kind of with our mouths open most of the time. So this would be kind of nice to have something for a change. And the other, you know, we've got likely 2013 legislation, why don't we put that county, you know, city-county merger stuff down there under likely? I just don't know that, you know, I don't know what's going to be coming on this, but I wouldn't want to see us to lay this over. And I do want to, and I know we did discuss this, but some of the points that I brought up are just missing from this. I said I didn't think we should have put number four on the list. It's on the list. And I think it's, makes us look pretty foolish. And it makes us look really parochial and real, I just think it starts us off on the wrong foot. If I were a state senator and saw this, I'd think, boy, these people are really back in 1910 someplace. They're not willing to get into the future. So we can do it behind the scenes without laying it out. The other thing I'd like to say is that I do think we need to go try for this ordinance authority to set fees. I think it would help various offices that have got fees stuck back in the 1930s and 1950s, where they're charging $10 for something that's been that way for three decades. And it'd be nice if we could come here, they could come here and say, we'd like to see this approved, and I think we'd probably approve it. So I think that's an important piece of legislation that got left off the list, and I think it's just kind of more of the same, where we just keep, you know, repeating some of these things, and I don't think it's very helpful, particularly number four. But I'll go with the flow today. I might vote against this, but I don't think we ought to lay it over. I think we do need to present it to the state senators, and obviously, a majority will rule. So if you want to accept that, somebody should probably make a motion.
Commissioner Rogers.
I'm just trying to clarify, we just agree on the stuff to talk to the senators about? Is this what this list is? That's this what this list is?
That's what this is.
Okay. This is, this is just what we're agreeing to talk about?
This is agreeing to talk as our initial initiative.
So we haven't set priorities? This is just what we're talking about? Okay, I'm good.
Commissioner Borgson.
Well, that's what my point was, is that this is not our legislative package, correct?
Sure looks like it to me.
No, that it doesn't. To me, this is initiatives that we've agreed upon to go and talk to the senators and the, during our tri-county retreat, and the senators, correct?
Correct.
So this is not our legislative package. These are items we're going to take and say, let's talk about these items. Then we come back with a list of legislative priorities that this board would vote up or down.
Commissioner Morgan.
The only thing is, in our package, we're already saying we're going to oppose the merger, number three.
Number four.
Or number four. Commissioner Boyle, if you were to support this, there was a motion, how would you want the motion, if I could ask you?
Well, I would like to see number four maybe move down to likely, compromise on that, so it can stay on the suggestion list. Number five, I'd like to change to some kind of positive language, instead of oppose.
So tell me exactly what you'd say on number four, if you don't mind?
Well, I'd rather have it go. I think it should go.
Okay.
Make a motion, so we can see where it goes with us.
All right, well, I'll make a motion that we remove number four from our published list of legislative initiatives.
Opposing a merger. I second that.
Mr. Chairman, just a point. There's an amendment on, made by Commissioner Boyle and seconded by Commissioner Borgson regarding fees.
Commissioner Morgan?
I'm Borgson.
It's Morgan.
No, it's me.
Seconded it, I didn't second.
On the ordinance authority.
Okay, we'll vote on that motion first.
Staff is loving this.
On the amendment regarding?
The fees, which is on the, at the committee meeting, that was item number, under items not to be presented at state senators' meeting, review all county fees, and raise where appropriate. So that'd be moving that to the front. We were trying to keep the front down to five items. Would you want to amend your motion to say replace item four with item one from other items not to be presented? Can you follow me?
No.
Let me bring this over. Commissioner, Mr. Tusha was kind enough to pull this out. This is from our committee. Commissioner, Rick Kubat, you look like you're wanting to say something.
Just to make this a little bit more confusing for everybody, I think Commissioner Boyle is specifically talking about a legislative initiative that would allow ordinance-making authority for counties, which is a little bit different than the item to review all county fees and raise where appropriate. I believe Commissioner Boyle's motion is ordinance-making authority for counties. Is that's correct?
I don't know who brought this up. I didn't.
Okay. That was discussed at our last committee meeting.
Yeah, I was there.
Okay. So we will vote, call for the vote on, oh, Commissioner Morgan, your flag.
No, it's, would it be, would it be simpler if we just kind of raised, withdrew all the motions and kind of started over a little bit?
Is that agreeable with everyone?
Certainly be agreeable with me.
So I make a motion to approve the list of legislative initiatives before us to talk with the tri-county, at the tri-county retreat and state senators' private.
As presented.
As presented.
Okay. Now, I would, I would offer an amendment to remove, or to at least, well, I would like to remove item number four, and to change item number five into positive language.
I second that. We have a motion and a second on the amendment. Call for the vote.
Just a moment, please.
Yes. Commissioner Borgson.
Would it be appropriate to?
What? Sure, I don't care.
I don't know, I mean, they're two different things.
Sure.
I'm going to, let's do four first and then five, because I don't know what idea you have to make that five a positive.
That's good. We'll split them. We'll split them.
So, okay.
So the motion will be?
To remove item four.
Remove item four as a second?
Yes. You're okay with that?
Yeah, okay. Call for the vote on the amendment.
Just a moment, please.
It's number four.
Number four.
Okay.
Okay, I would make an amendment to change the language in number five to support present state law regarding visitor improvement funds, something of that nature.
Is there a second?
Just a moment, please.
We have a second, Commissioner.
Could you restate that? Mr. Chairman? Could you restate the amendment?
That we would support any statute, we would support retaining the visitor improvement funds as they exist.
Okay, good.
And we will call for the vote.
Just a moment, please.
As soon as you're ready.
Okay.
Yes, Commissioner Boyle.
Okay, announced the vote yet?
Commissioner Morgan? Motion passes.
And then I want to add an amendment about abortion. No, I don't either. I want to.
I was going to say.
Claire, I knew that would bring Claire down right away. See? See? No, I want to, I want to add an amendment about supporting the Nebraska Association of County Officials in their effort to obtain ordinance authority for counties to set fees.
Do we have a motion? Is there a second?
That was a motion.
Oh, that's, oh, yes. Okay, that was your very first one, right?
Yeah.
We have a motion and a second. No discussion, call for the vote.
Just a moment, please.
Get the defibrillator for Claire, will you?
I would say add on defining rape.
Oh, God.
Commissioner Morgan?
He just likes you to close it out.
Motion passes.
If I could make a point of personal privilege?
Do you want to make, before we vote on the ordinance as a whole?
Oh, I guess so. No, I don't. Go ahead.
We need a vote on the ordinance as amended?
May I speak?
Yes, you may.
Mr. Chairman, members of Douglas County Board of Commissioners, Tom Kavanaugh, Douglas Just very generally, Commissioner Morgan, you've had the honor of serving the citizens in the state legislature, the city of Omaha, and Douglas County, and you made some very good remarks just a little while ago about mutual respect with state senators, and having dialogue, communicating with others. A number of years ago, the World World ran an editorial relative to that issue, and the relationship in between the seven members of this county board and the nine countywide elected officials of having mutual respect and communicating with each other. We received the backup to this item less than 24 hours ago in the clerk's office. So not only has the public not been aware of what items are going to be discussed on this legislative initiatives, but also the nine countywide elected officials have not been spoken with or visited with. If you're going to do any more amendments before you pass this and present it to our Nebraska state senators, I respectfully request, if you do nothing else, that you clarify that your 2012 Douglas County legislative initiatives is clarified by stating that it's the 2012 Douglas County Board of Commissioners legislative initiatives. Since some of this, I'm, you know, you've been around, all of you have been around long enough to know that there are nine countywide elected officials that swear and take an oath to uphold the laws of the state of Nebraska. And perhaps you don't find it necessary to communicate on mutually shared items that affect all of us, for not just the citizens of Douglas County, but those that they elect to carry out the duties and the laws of the state of Nebraska. So proceed and do what you want to do on this item, but I think it'd probably be, to avoid Commissioner Boyle's description of being, coming off as foolish, that you may want to consider not only the respect that you have for state senators, the respect that you have for other county board members in the other three counties, two counties, but also the respect of the other county elected officials that serve the same citizens you serve. Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle.
Well, I'll address this issue. I go back and forth on this. I can see some merit in it, because we do have a lot of frustration over budgetary matters, primarily, although I do have to say, and this is why I go back and forth on it, we do have outstanding cooperation from the elected officials, and of all the people to testify, Mr. Kavanaugh has been a real leader in reducing his budget repeatedly, so I have to give him credit for that. And he's done that without anything other than a letter from us suggesting it, but I think that's in his nature to do that. So I applaud him for what he has done in the past, and probably will, I'm sure will continue to do it in the future. You know, I'm not really concerned about the, I mean, I don't know about hurting feelings or anything. You know, we have opposed each other in the past. It's not unusual for, unfortunately, for Douglas County elected officials to go down to Lincoln and oppose each other before legislative committees testifying on opposite sides. That's kind of, kind of the vigorous part of our elected officials, whether it's county commissioners, or whether it's any of the line offices. And that's a good thing. I mean, that's, and we do this in public. We present both sides. We just did this recently on the merger question, the registered deeds and the assessor. The registered deeds was down here and spoke quite eloquently about why it shouldn't happen, and we voted to go ahead and move forward with it. So that's part of the, part of politics. And, you know, in the past, we've had, I think, good relations with almost every, there's some exception, you know, we haven't had a lot of cooperation from one or two offices once in a while, but we generally have excellent cooperation with the line offices. At times, you know, we've disagreed where, I mean, the line offices, quite a few of them actually sued us, filed a lawsuit, and took us to court over a budgetary matter several years ago. It didn't hurt my feelings when they did it. At the top of our off, they won. So, I mean, I think it leads to the vitality of county government to have these different points of view come to a proper forum, which in this case is the legislature, and let's go for it and see what happens. I would like to see this happen far off in the future. I mean, by that, if these elected officials end up, if the bill would pass allowing for the appointment of elected officials in the line offices and the metropolitan class of counties, I wouldn't want to see it take place immediately. I'd like to see it take place in eight to 10 years, to kind of let things phase in, phase out, so this isn't a personal vendetta. That's what I'd like to see. I mean, it's not a personal vendetta, but I don't want it to be viewed as such. I mean, it's not a personal vendetta, but I don't want it to be viewed as such. So, that's the only thing I'd add to this. But I think it's healthy. I think it's vigorous. I think it's good for the political discussion, and I hope we move forward with it. At the same time, I have very, very deep respect for all of the line offices of both parties. They're good, efficient people, but I think we need a little bit more control over the budget primarily, and this would give that to us.
Commissioner Duda.
Thank you. I think we need to pick our fights and, I don't mean to reopen last week's, but I think we're going to have our hands full trying to keep the inheritance tax this year. I think it's going to be quite a challenge. And I don't think that adding, I mean, that really should be our focus. It's going to have to be our focus. I don't think that we have a prayer of getting this through that would allow elected row offices to be appointed. It's going to put us at odds with NACO. It's going to put us at odds within our own county. And therefore, I would move to delete the third item from our legislative initiatives.
Commissioner Borgson.
Well, I disagree with that. I think that it should stay on there in terms of discussion. I mean, just to Commissioner Boyle's point, we've talked about it, and talked about it, and talked about it, and talked about it, and we've never really moved it anywhere other than to talk about it. And so, to move it forward, even if it doesn't go anywhere, to me at least, gets it on the floor where it needs to be at the legislature for discussion, whether it be in committee or whatever. It needs to be there for discussion purposes. And so, a good way to start to see, even if we have a prayer, which I think we do have a prayer, that we talk with the other county commissioners at the tri-county retreat, and then we talk to our delegation at our breakfast and see what opinions and issues they may have with it.
Commissioner Boyle?
Well, you know, one of the things that Mr. Kavanaugh said and something that Commissioner Duda said just made me think of, of this approach, we really have not sat down with the elected officials and talked to them about what our concerns are. So, this is kind of a shot over their territory without any real explanation. I think at a minimum, we should take up Mr. Kavanaugh's suggestion, or I don't want to say complaint, but his remarks that we haven't even bothered to talk to them. I think we need to and say, this is why this is coming about. I think we need to explain it at least to them and certainly, I think, maybe to the, certainly to the public. So, I don't know. I'd like to see us do that before, I mean, we can go ahead and support this, I guess, get it down there, but I would like to see us talk to the county officials. I, the only reason I see this happening is because we're concerned about spending. I don't want to see it as a grab for power or anything like that, but I mean, I think it's spending. And then when you look at that and say, well, wait a minute, haven't they done everything they could in reducing budgets? So, what is it we're really after here? So, I think we ought to honor Mr. Kavanaugh's comment and invite the commissioners, excuse me, to the slip, the elected officials in the row offices to visit with us about what this is all about. Maybe even before we move it forward.
Okay, and if I could interject something here. What if we were to call a human resource meeting with all the, inviting all the elected officials? They're always invited, but specifically inviting them to discuss this issue. That'd give us an open forum, and we can do that either before, I don't know, because I'm going to be out of town. We could do it after our tri-county effort if we feel there is support from the other counties. And if we decide we're going to drop it at that time, there's no need to talk to them.
I'd like, I'd like to suggest that instead of that, we go to one of the really great restaurants in my district and have a Dutch lunch with them.
Okay, you're not going to buy?
I'm not buying.
Okay. Commissioner Morgan?
I agree with what Mary Ann said for sure. I also think that it would be a good idea to visit with the elected officials of the county, as Commissioner Boyle has suggested. The only thing I would like to see is if we're going to do that, you know, I'd like it to be very transparent, as much as I like the restaurants in your district, not quite as much as my district. But I would suggest, so we do it at a regular meeting.
Yeah, okay.
And do it openly.
That's okay with me.
And if we have things to say, be candid and let that discussion really be out there for the public to see us working here together.
Okay, Commissioner Duda.
Thank you. Well, I will look forward to the discussion with all the elected officials as we seek their support to eliminate all their positions from being elected. That should be an interesting conversation. Since my amendment apparently has died for lack of a second, I would like to offer another amendment as another follow-up to what Clerk Kavanaugh was just pointing out, that we call this Douglas County Legislative Initiatives. And I think we should insert the word "board" after Douglas County. I think it should say Douglas County Boards Legislative Initiatives to make it clear who within the county. We are a multi-headed beast, and we are not always going to be on the same page. City of Omaha is the same, and that's why you've got city council has their own lobbyist and the mayor has their own. We don't always have to be on exactly the same page, but we should clarify whose legislative initiatives these are, and therefore, I would offer an amendment that we insert the word "boards" after Douglas County.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We have some people who wish to speak. Commissioner Tusha, did you want to speak on this, or do you want to wait?
I wanted to speak on the elected and appointed.
Okay.
I just want to make a quick comment. I don't have a problem on having a meeting with the elected officials. I did bring this to the table back in January, and I don't have my paperwork currently with me, but I believe on the original amendment that I brought to the board is to have this happen in 2016. So, it wasn't, again, something that was going to happen overnight. You know, we're looking at six years out there. So, I will get to my original paperwork, and I will make sure that I have everything put together, and I will bring that to the meeting if we choose to have, whether internal or an external meeting. I will make sure I have all my paperwork with the agenda and everything that we had on it to bring with me. Thank you.
Oops, I accidentally had two. Commissioner Rogers, you were next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I mean, let me say, I didn't, I didn't vote to remove three just because my understanding is it's just supposed to be talked about at the meeting. It's not the legislative agenda now. I don't know where I would support that later because I do think that the clerk's points are relevant, but since it's just being discussed, I have no problem with that. But, I mean, to Claire's comments, I don't want to separate the, you know, the board agenda is the county's agenda because, I mean, compared to the city, it's a two, it's a balance of power. There is no balance of power where we're at. I mean, yeah. I mean, and my point is, I mean, we make the, we make the row officers' budgets, they can do what they want to do with them. If they want to spend it, they have to come back here. And I, and my only distinction is that, you know, county government is different. The board is the executive, pretty much, and the legislative head. We delegate the executive role of running day-to-day to a person, but we are two-in-one. And so, you know, our agenda is the county's agenda, and I don't, I don't think there's an extension because the bottom line is that the row offices don't have authority over the bottom line of the place we have that. Thank you.
Commissioner Borgson.
Well, that's, that was the point I was going to make, and, you know, again, I just remind everybody that, and there's record of it, that for the two strategic planning sessions that we've had, that issue was at the top of the list for discussion and approval to move forward with. So, it's not that we've done this in a vacuum. It's not that we've done it behind closed doors. It was talked about in, when we were at Creighton for the strategic planning and wherever we were for the last one. And each time, there was a date specific, which was at the time, the 2020 or '24, and then it moved up, and then you brought it back. So, you know, again, I wholeheartedly agree with Commissioner Rogers, though, is that we are the executive board of the county, whether people like it or not, we are. And I also need to say that communication is a two-way street. We're always knocked up here for not reaching out and talking to the other elected officials, but there's plenty that goes on that we don't know about in elected officials' offices and legislative that's not communicated with us as well. So, I guess we both have to work on that.
Commissioner Boyle?
Well, I have a good friend who's a very, very successful businessman, and he's a client. And we have lunch often, and one of the things he said to me is that, we were talking about different things, and there was someone who had approached him about buying a business, and it was an interesting business, sounded like it could make a lot of money, and it was something that'd be right up this fellow's alley. And so, I said, I said, what do you think you're going to do? Have you made him mind? He has minded. I said, I'm not going to do it. And I said, why? And he said, because I know my limitations. I know what I can and can't do, and this is something I really can't do. I don't understand it well enough, and I really can't do it. And so, it really comes down to, to me, this whole issue of, you know, executive and stuff. I'm shocked to hear anybody say that we're executive, but we're not. We're administrative. We carry out the laws of the state of Nebraska. We don't have any initiatives. We can't even raise fees. So, I mean, we have no executive authority here. We're the overseers. We're kind of the landlords. And so, the idea that we've got all this power and we're executive and we can do this, we can do that is just a myth. And it probably makes you feel good, but you can only have to ask Pam Tusha about what happened when she was out at a public hearing, public meeting about when a fellow described the city and the county, and got to the county, and he said, they don't do anything. And, I mean, that's the perception, and it's, I mean, this is a part-time job. We're not executive. I hate to break that news to you, but if that's on your business card, take it off. The other thing I'd say is at the top of this list, it says, this is the 2013 Douglas County Legislative Initiatives. So, if I, if this was just left here on the table, if I could print it out and leave it here, the president of the city council would come this afternoon and pick it up and goes, oh, this is Douglas County's, Douglas County Board or Douglas County's legislative initiative. This is it. This is not a talking piece. It should say, you know, if it's a talking piece, because it looks to me like this is it. So, if this isn't it, then it probably ought to say, this is a draft. We are considering these positions. And make it clear, because that's not what this says. This says, this is the Douglas County Legislative, the list of Douglas County Legislative Initiatives. So, I think they are our initiatives, and we shouldn't, we should, if we're going to water them down, if they're just kind of suggestions, kind of like the Ten Commandments, there were the Ten Suggestions, we need to say so, that Moses brought down these Ten Suggestions from the mountain.
And he did. Are you done?
I am.
Okay, it's my turn because I put my light on to speak. Number one is our initiatives are somewhat like an amoeba, as I've watched them over the past four years. They change as things are initiated at the legislation. They change as we analyze and discuss things. And so, this is where it stands today, but does not necessarily mean it won't be changed in a week or two or three. Number two, regarding this, the discussion on elected versus appointed, we are operating under a structure of government that was established in 1854 or before, okay? We need to make sure we're modernized and working in today's system with communications. You know, the county seat used to be within today's horse ride of the edges of the county. And there is a national effort toward less government and less expenses. If we want to achieve some of these, we need to explore all opportunities. And this is an opportunity that I think is very timely to explore. It doesn't mean it's going to happen. It doesn't mean all of the row offices would be replaced. It just is a good time to start discussing. Where do we want to be in eight years, 12 years, 16 years? And we have to put on our magic glasses with that crystal ball and see what we can look through the haze and do our best to try to make this a good, more efficient, because county government is efficient. And we do, in Douglas County, we're very blessed with fantastic elected officials. And the way it was pointed out to me, if we structure it right, it would be giving every elected office time to plan and prepare and to engage into the process. And that's what I wanted to say. Commissioner Duda, you're next.
Thank you. And I wholeheartedly, for once, agree with Commissioner Boyle.
Record that.
We are an administrative board. We really are, and it's hard for us to remember that sometimes. We heard a little bit today about respect and dignity for other people, and yet then we turn around and say, this, these are the legislative initiatives. We don't care what the other elected officials say. We want to do away with them, in fact, potentially, and start appointing them. And, you know, they, they really don't have the opportunity for input. There are seven of us voting on these initiatives. Not all of the countywide elected officials get to vote with us, and so, for us to presume that we are representing them with these views, I don't think shows a lot of respect for them. I don't understand the heartburn with just saying, these are the Douglas County Boards Legislative Initiatives. Seven of us are voting on it? Who else, who else's legislative initiatives are they that we're setting? I don't think we can set the legislative initiatives for, for the clerk's office. And I don't, simply because Tom got up and spoke, I don't mean to hold him out, but any elected official, if they find the money within their budget to go hire a lobbyist, they are welcome to go hire a lobbyist. They have that authority and go down and say whatever they want, you know? For a senator to say, gee, the legislative initiatives don't include this, how can you be saying it? Well, those are the board's initiatives. And I think it's fine to clarify, these are our initiatives. To me, this shouldn't be that difficult to insert the word "boards" in front of our legislative initiatives. Thank you.
Commissioner Rogers?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Usually, I would just let the last word, but this is, because I do see this as education in county government, and so, I'm going to continue that a little bit. Quads is kept, when you're administrator, you are the executive. The governor is an executive. He doesn't set a law. The legislature sets the law. He runs the day-to-day. We run the day-to-day, and we set the laws locally. Our laws may be resolutions. They aren't binding by ordinance, but we are the administrators.
We don't do laws.
We are the administrators and the executive. We don't do laws, but the mayor doesn't do laws, and he is the chief executive of the city of Omaha, and you two know that. And I know if I'm sitting in there for four years, they don't, they don't set a law. He is, he is considered the chief executive. Now, you know, so you got, you got powers in one, and that's just the distinction of counties. And to Commissioner Kraft, it's been there since 1890, 1800s, because there are, the only reason we don't get into the position of the clerk is because the law doesn't let us. In Louisiana, they let particular commissioners run particular departments. In other places, they have elected people that are separate, and, but in no place are they considered separate to that degree. And, you know, to Claire's point, it, you know, the only position that is recognized by the legislature as the county's position is ours. And when an elected official goes up there to say that, they say, this is mine and not the county's. And so, that's the only piece why I say that in that regard, because there, there are subtleties, there's technicalities, but the fact is that, you know, we have the authority. We have, and when we get into these battles all the time with them, because the fact is, we want to be clear, when they go up there, we are the voice that sounds. So, I'm, I'm not disputing in any respects to, you know, the opinion, but, you know, I think it's very clear, you know, we are an executive body, and we just choose to operate our executive power through the hiring of a person. Because the fact is, if we aren't happy with something that happens in the day-to-day running of the place, it eventually goes up to us. And to me, that's the distinction between administrative and executive piece. They're all in one power. Thank you.
There are no other lights on. We have a motion and a second. The motion is to add the word county board, to add the word "board."
Boards.
Boards.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Call for the vote? Right now, just add, this is just add the word "boards."
Motion passes.
Okay. Okay, so now, as amended, we need a motion and a second.
There's a motion and a second. Commissioners Mary Ann Borgson and Commissioner Claire Duda. Number four is in that, the way it's written.
Yes.
Yeah.
Commissioner Boyle.
Is this a, is this a moving target? Is this list, this list subject to change?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Could I offer an amendment then, at the end of where it says now, 2013 Douglas County Board's Legislative Initiatives, as of October 30, 2012?
Is there a second?
I'd take that as a friendly amendment. I'll give it.
Fine.
Okay. As a friendly amendment, it is accepted.
Okay.
Unless anybody opposes. See none. Call for the vote.
Just one, please.
This is all in the pack.
Yeah.
Yes. Boy, I thought that was gonna be a three-minute discussion.
Okay. Yeah. We spent half the time with others, though.
Okay.
Commissioner Boyle?
I've got a yes vote in there. Did it register? Put me down, please, please.
Commissioner Boyle, voting yes. Motion passes.
There is need for an executive session discussing labor issues and matters and negotiations and personnel, and I do have a few comments, not comments. The Human Resource Committee will be meeting shortly after we re-adjourn from executive session in the room 903. The Douglas County Board of Commissioners will not meet on Tuesday, November 6th. Remember to get out and vote, 2012. And the next meeting with the Douglas County Board of Commissioners will be Tuesday, November 13th, 2012, at 9:00 a.m. Due to observance of Veterans Day, the deadline for submitting items for the November 13th, 2012 agenda is Tuesday, November 6th, at 3:00 p.m. Douglas County offices will be closed Monday, November 12th, 2012, in observance of Veterans Day. And we'd like to offer words of encouragement and condolence and hope to our friends on the East Coast who are suffering from a very large national disaster. We need a motion to go into executive session.
No vote?
Second.
Call for the vote?
Oh my God.
What's wrong?
I know. Oh my God, seriously.
Everything checks out?
I need to go pack my bags.
Yeah, you do.
I'm in favor of it. Mike, boy.
Eurya Asma.
I voted for it.
Second.
Free convene.
I've not heard what we're talking about.
Oh, yes.
How could my own, how could my...
Yeah.
This is another one. But I might.
Not bad, I couldn't put it right.
Motion passes.